Good morning, everyone. Apologies for the delay. We had some technical difficulties here that we have sorted out. Going to call this budget study session to order for the morning of May 15th. Tony, would you please call the role?
Jimenez.
President.
Torres.
Present.
Cohen.
Here.
Ortiz.
Present.
Davis.
Here.
Cohen.
Present.
Candela.
Here.
Foley. Batra.
Present.
Kameh.
Here.
Mahan.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. All right, great. So, we're going to start this morning with fees and charges, and then we'll get into the capital budget after that. And as usual, we will do public comment at the end. Jim, we're ready when you are.
Sure, Mayor. Good morning, Mayor and City Council. We start today with the study session with the 2324 proposed fees and charges report. It's a document that accompanies the proposed budget process. And it is, the revenue estimates there are incorporated into the proposed operating budget, which we've been talking about for the past few days last week. We don't have any specific presentation for the fees and charges document, but we do have staff here to answer any questions you might have.
Thanks, Jim. Let's see if my colleagues have any questions. I have, oh, great. We'll go to Councilman Jimenez.
Thank you. Just a few questions. I was looking at some of the rebalancing efforts as it relates to the cost recovery efforts in some of the departments. And so, can you play out, I was just trying to think through, not being a budget person, as it relates to how it would play, because you're rebalancing a lot using excess fund balances in all these different pots, it seems, to get some of these departments at 100% cost recovery. And what if we didn't do that? What would sort of happen? Does that make sense?
Jim, I think he's talking about the development fee program.
Yeah, well, it seems like in several spaces. Yeah, it might not be all the departments, but...
Yeah, let me speak to both of those. So, I think in general, for the fees that we have in our document, we have to, we have very different, or various different costing methodologies to figure out what does it cost to provide the service that the fee would be providing to the user. And so, then we, the fee that's assessed is to recover what that cost is. And so, a lot of the fees in the fees and charges document are in the general fund. And by and large, we try to be cost recovery on most of those fees. There are a number of ones, like in parks, or library, or animal care and services, where we are below cost recovery for deliberate reasons. In the development fee program, which may be what you are speaking of here, is a, those are not budgeted in the general fund, but they're special funds. We call them the development fee funds, with the planning, the building, and the citywide, and the fire, and the public works. And so, those ones are, the amount of what the fee recovers in the 2324 proposed isn't quite get you to full cost recovery levels, but there is a, both an available fund balance from prior year savings, as well as, is always intended as projects move through the development process, some of the fees get paid upfront, and they're spent down over a multi-year period as projects move through the development pipeline. And so, we say they're fully cost recovery when you factor in that carryover of unspent funds and the spend down of the works in progress items. That's helpful.
Okay. Yeah, it is. The other thing, I was trying to find this, one particular, there was mention of a cost recovery fee that essentially wasn't cost recovery, but I think there was mention, like, we're going to look at the, essentially, the structure of the program to try to get it to cost recovery. Does that sound familiar to you? I don't know if, I'm trying to find the exact...
I mean, I do know we have several different fees where we take maybe a multi-year approach to get back to a cost recovery level. So, maybe there are some instances where the different costs that go into a fee after we do in analysis, the cost is maybe quite a bit higher than what it otherwise would have been. But we take, we don't want to increase that fee all at once. We might phase into it over a multi-year period. We have several of them, we have that.
And so, where I'm going with this is, if we consistently are not cost recovering in some of these spaces, do we, at what point do we explore, well, maybe we need to sort of think about how we're approaching this? And to get, just to give you a sample of what I've heard is, I know that during the transition committee for permitting, planning permitting, things of that nature, that Council Member Dev Davis and I led, along with Ted, is that there was mention in there about really restructuring the approach by which we attempt to recover fees within the planning department, for example. And I'm curious what that would do if we went in and really changed the way we do it, how that would sort of, would that throw a wrench in your process? Would that just simply be just a different accounting sort of strategy? Would, how would that?
I think that would depend on how we were looking at the cost recovery model itself. I don't know if Chris Burton wants to maybe chat a little bit about some of that thought.
Well, I was thinking, what if it wasn't cost recovery? What if we wanted to actually fund some of that work out of the general fund? Essentially, would it just be, we would need to figure out where that one is going to come from, just simply plug it in, and that would be...
Yeah, I mean, if the choice was to be deliberately below cost recovery, then the general fund would have to pick up what the amount that wasn't cost recovery was, which would then affect, you know, the base budget and the future five-year forecast amount.
Okay. And Chris, I don't, I didn't have a specific question, but if you want to say something, feel free.
Well, there's an option there. Thank you. Councilmember Chris Burton, Director of Planning, Building, Code Enforcement. So, yeah, through the transition committee, I know we did talk about this a number of different ways. I think there's the sort of accounting pieces that go into the budget. I think there's some bigger questions that we're working through internally within the department on how we assess time spent, and how that relates to the cost recovery model. Obviously, you know, our planners, our plan reviewers, you know, all of our staff aren't working on reviewing plans all the time. There's a lot of other things that go in. And some of their time gets spent on things that aren't covered by that model, right? So, for example, the best example is, somebody calls up with a question, and they want to know, you know, what's my zoning? What can I do on my property? That's not covered in a fee model anywhere. So, we're constantly looking at the model, trying to understand how that time is getting allocated, and how that gets covered in the fees.
And so, in those types, in those instances, essentially, that's what's driving the number down as it relates to cost recovery? That's what's not allowing us to be fully cost recovery? Because we haven't figured out a way to capture those fees, if you will?
So, there's a number of different pieces, and a number of different funding sources that go into those things. So, it's a pretty sort of complex system in the backend. You know, and as Jim said, it's a multi-year process. And when you think about some of our development entitlements, we're working over two, three years with sequel documents. And so, how we line up all those pieces based on the length of the project versus the sort of individual accounting within a single budget year, that's often where that challenge around cost recovery comes from.
All right. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. The other question I have, Jim, is, you know, looking at the police department, some of the items that are attempted to be fully cost recovery. And what I'm curious about is, are there, is there a distinction to be made as it relates to the cost recovery, if it's a sworn officer doing some of those duties, say, manning the desk for permits related to, or fees related to, like, getting your vehicle out of storage? If it was, say, a non-sworn, I'm trying to understand sort of how that is built into this.
Correct. Yeah, so if there was a, how we work with the police department, the police department does this work at a very detailed level, but they determine if it's a sworn staff performing the function, if it's a civilian staff, and they use the costing of that civilian or sworn staff function to assess what that fee then would otherwise be. So, how much time that classification spends, what the cost of that classification is, and then that filters into what the ultimate fee is. I know police had spent some time over this last cycle, you know, diving into some of their different fees. And so, I think some of them that were done by a sworn staff are now done by a civilian. They also had done some technology improvements to streamline some of their fee processing. So, you saw some pretty big fee reductions, particularly in the taxi cab area, where those calls went down.
So, say, for example, if there was a fee that was, that the community was paying for X reason, right? And it was, that was processed by a sworn officer. If we were interested in reducing that fee, would we just essentially request or talk to the police department about switching out the sworn officer to a non-swarm, and thus allowing us to reduce the fee? Is that, how it could be done?
And police can come down here if they want to correct me here, but I think where we have the sworn officers, where we want a sworn officer to do that work. I think in there are instances where it can be done by someone besides a sworn officer. I think we are moving in that direction to have it done by a civilian staff.
Okay. All right. Thank you. And the last question I have is related to the, excuse me, the animal care and services. I know Jennifer, the city manager, was included this in the budget, and very, got a tour recently, and so, very much appreciate it. But you know what came to mind, as I was looking at some of the cost recovery fees as it relates to the animal care and services? Obviously, we contract with other cities, or other cities contract with us for us. So, I'm curious how that plays into that, right? And so, and I was looking through some of the, I think, category two and category one fees, and wondering if any of those fees, we can attribute some of those fees to the work we're doing for these other cities? And curious how the cost recovery model works in those circumstances. I mean, I assume we would be charging, say, Milpitas' full cost recovery for X fee, right? Is that...
We'll have Matt come down to help with that question.
Yeah, thank you. And I guess, Matt, as you come up, I guess what I would, what I think would be important to see is that if we're doing, you know, other cities are paying us to do this work, but that in those instances where we're doing work for other cities, that those, in fact, are fully cost recovered, and that's not where some of the gaps are, if you will.
That is, good morning, Councilmember Matt Lash, Acting Public Works Director. The intention is that it is cost recovery regardless of the location of the service provided, and we have contracts with those agencies as well that pay us directly for services too. So, you have fees that are for the animals and services directly, but then we also have contract services for those cities. And those are intended to, over the long run, capture all of them. So, you know, year by year, you might have a little bit of deviation, but the intention is, overall, we are fully cost recovery.
Okay, so just so I understand, so the contracts that we have with other cities and doing some of the animal care work for them, that we go pick up a dog in Milpitas, you know, it costs $100 to do that, I'm making this up, right? But it costs $100 to do that, that we are charging Milpitas $100 to do that?
So, we have, so we just approved a contract extension with Milpitas last week, and those things are intended to, over the amount of animals that we service in Milpitas, charge them for those services that we render to Milp, in Milpitas and to Milpitas animals. And we do have cost escalators that are built into that contract as well that go up over time.
Okay. All right.
And then, in theory, we would then negotiate if we see a difference in service level that we need to provide them, we would then go renegotiate those fees with Milpitas as well.
But how long is the contract, for example?
This last one, we just, I think we extended it for five years, and have add-ons, but we do have the ability to go back and negotiate if we see different...
Like mid-contract and open...
I would assume so, yeah.
Just because I'm thinking, if we start seeing that, okay, this isn't fully cost recovery, we're not waiting five years to then go say, hey, you actually need to...
Correct. Correct. Yeah, we would not.
All right. Okay, cool.
These are revenues paid us, they're not like assessed like on a per fee basis, but there's a revenue that flows into the general fund to offset the projected cost for those cities.
That's correct.
Now, they reflect it here in the fees and charges for those cities. It's, the separate agreement assesses the cost for those cities, and then those cities pay us on annual basis, that amount per the contract.
Yeah. And just the general idea that I guess is in my head is just simply that we want to make sure we're getting all the money we need to be getting from these cities in which we're doing work in. So, that was it. But, okay. Thank you. Appreciate it. And those are all my questions. Appreciate it.
Great. Thanks, Councilmember. Councilman Cohen?
Yeah, thank you. And we always spend very little time on this topic, and I think my first two years, I kind of accepted what was in front of us. But, you know, I think, we hear a lot from residents about things that are impediments to think, to maybe priorities that we have as a council that we also want to do with them. And we had this conversation during the discussion in January on Trees, for example. And I know there's direction already to go back and reevaluate what can we do as a city to potentially reduce costs so that we actually get the result we want to get? Because if the fees are actually preventing us from achieving objectives that we have, then we ought to reevaluate them. And we spend a little bit of time at this meeting, kind of just, as a matter of course, just saying, here's the report, here is what we were recommending as escalators and all the fees, and we all kind of say, okay. But I'm not sure we're looking through all these in fine detail as a council and as a city as to, you know, what are the things that are, how can we meet objectives better, maybe by using the fee structures? And another example I had recently was somebody who's talking about putting solar on what isn't necessarily a residence, but is a nonprofit facility. And they were saying, well, you know, we're already paying for the solar, and the $2,000 in fees that the city wants to charge us for the permit now makes it out of reach, and we don't want to do the solar. And I'm, you know, if we have an objective as a city to encourage some responsibility from our, from people who are doing business in the city, sometimes the fee structure is something we ought to consider. And I'm not sure I have a question here, I mean, I'm looking at you, but it's not necessarily just directed at you, Jim. I think more of a comment, I think, for the council. We ought to start to maybe figure out, or for the city manager's office, how do we go back and review more, in more detail, each of these category areas, and understand where we want to charge fees, where we don't? Which ones should be fee recovery? Which ones should be things that we, as a city, want to encourage, and therefore will, are willing to subsidize? What kinds of fees can we, as a council office, for example, use some of our grant money to help our residents offset in order to do the things that we have as a priority? There should be ways, more official ways, that we can assist people when they're, you know, when they're coming up against these fees. So, I don't know, maybe it's a question for Jennifer to sort of weigh in, or maybe it's just something for food for thought at this point. I don't have any specific things I want to pull out of the report today, but I feel like we do this very quickly, and for 15 minutes every year, and then we'll move on to the next year, and we haven't thought through what's really in this set of fees.
Yeah, those are really good comments, because we haven't actually, in fact, Jim and I were talking about this when this document was being prepared. We probably should spend some time, and it's probably a little too late to do it now for this upcoming year, but maybe in this next spring, before we get policy directions through the mayor's March budget message, perhaps we can set aside some time to go through the category one and category two fees, and reconfirm that they should be those categories, or reset them to something else. And then, that would drive us, and it'd be in context of our forecast, because we could do it after the forecast or around that same time. And then, that could drive us to prepare the fees and charges document in a, perhaps slightly different way than we're preparing it today.
Yeah, I'd appreciate that. Maybe some, at some point, a study session that we can have to delve into it in more depth, when it's not part of this week long.
Does.
No, I know, but we're not, that is what this is, but we're not, we're not really delving into it in depth. And I guess the other thing I would just say is, I think as a council, we often, many of us throughout the year, bring forward policy documents, policy proposals, that may have addressed this, like we did with Trees, but clearly, it's all in the context of our budget, right? We can't just say, oh, let's eliminate this fee because it makes this objective better. We have to know how that affects the budget. So, thinking, maybe spending some time, I think, like you said, for this year, to look through that, and understand how we can, you know, work on specific priorities in these fee, in the fee document would be helpful.
I also think, Councilmember, just, I think it's a great point, and while this is a study session, you know, there's a difference between this kind of study session, where it's kind of just on us to read the entire packet and ask the questions, versus one that's set up by staff to educate us, give us more context, give us some analysis, help us understand things like, what does an average household pay in fees every year, for example? What, how do fees impact different city services? What are we funding? How have they changed over time? I think it would be great, at some point, maybe in the spring, sometime next year, to just better empower and inform the council if we had a study session, or some opportunity to just get better educated, because it is a somewhat daunting, you know, binder here. So, I think it's, I think it's a great point. Okay. Anything else? Or you're good? Okay. On to Vice Mayor Kameh.
Thank you. I know that the document provides us with justification, and, you know, the percentage they want to increase, and the reasons why. But, you know, I'm a little bit curious as to, when I look at page 22 in the, in the document, your chart A1, just for example, you know, I look at cost recovery of what it was, the current fee and the proposed fee, and there's different kinds of percentages there. I know that you try to achieve 100% cost recovery, but, you know, you've got 89.7, you have 95.8, and, you know, you have different percentages there. If you look in the detail up above, when they're talking about the different departments, you have percentages in different areas. So, I'm just sort of curious as to what kind of tracking is done, because I understand the justification, but it doesn't really inform my decision-making as to, I don't know if this is good or bad. I don't have any way of understanding, okay, well, you know, we don't have to go to 100% because 89.7% is good enough. So, I kind of feel a little bit like, as we're moving forward in this, and if there's a desire for the council to want to, you know, get a little bit more information, it'd be nice to understand, you know, at what point do you have diminishing returns, right? At what point do people stop saying, oh, well, it costs too much, I'm just gonna do it, or whatever, right? So, I don't understand. I'm seeking to understand, and I think that it would be helpful to have tracking year over year to see, you know, what does this mean? You know, and are the fees giving us the outcome that we want them to give? Or are they not? I mean, obviously, it's the cost of doing business. I get that, right? But beyond that, some of them have different percentages. So, you know, I just, you know, on total category number one, you're going from 75.9% to 80.6%. I, that doesn't say anything to me, not understanding, you know, is that a good thing? Is that a bad thing? So, I just think that it would be helpful to have some sort of data to inform, at least for me, my decision-making, because right now, it's 280 pages of lots and lots and lots of information that gives justification, oh, we need to increase because da-da-da. But it doesn't tell me sort of the, why is 80 okay? So, I just, I just want to put that out there.
Yeah, those are really good questions, Vice Mayor. And kind of getting back to, you know, Jennifer's thought about the study session for the following year, it's a little bit of a byproduct of having an extremely diverse organization that does a lot of different service and service delivery models. And so, trying to distill that down into a couple of summary rows obviously leaves a lot of information out. But, so, thinking through some ways, and again, it kind of goes back some of that to our discussion with Councilmember Jimenez, where that cost recovery level is maybe a little bit lower because we're not factoring in some of the other carryover savings to make that bring up to fully cost recovery. So, there's nuance sort of throughout the document, even within individual fees. So, why don't we take that back as part of our broader conversation to sort of make sure the council is engaged and is able to give some thought and some policy direction about how the fees impact the rest of the service delivery model?
That's great. I just think that as we let the community and the public think that, oh, yes, this, for example, building and code enforcement, it's cost recovery, we're looking for 100% cost recovery, that may or may not be quite right, because as was mentioned today, there are things that are not part of the fee, that get paid for by the fee. So, there may be differences, but people don't know that. So, I just, I just think that's important.
I just want to, I just want to add in. So, yeah, because this is complicated, you know, the category one are supposed to be 100% cost recovery per council policy, and that's what, you know, we need to revisit all of that, and what's in category two, which has shifted over the years based on a different council direction. When it's not at 100% cost recovery, you should be able to look in the detailed narrative of the department to explain why. It could be, just in general, this is more for informing, I'm just, it could be because we're, the department has done a reevaluation of the time it takes, because they don't generally do that for every single fee, every single year. They kind of rotate them, and it's costing more, and in order to make it accessible, the service that they're paying for the fee, we may make a recommendation in this document to phase that increase in over a three-year period, for example. So, then you would see that it's less than 100% cost recovery because we're doing that phase in. But that detail would be in the, that particular department's narrative of why it is that we're not there. And like on planning, building, and code enforcement, because we have a works in progress reserve from fees that have been there for future services, we have to add those in, and when you add those in, it gets, becomes 100% cost recovery, but you can't see it just strictly with the math here, it's in the narrative. So, it is a very dense document, lots of numbers, but that's what's generally happening, and broad brushing it, but generally, that's what's happening with category one. And then, category two are by definition, can be more than or less than cost recovery per council previous direction. But again, I think it is time, we haven't really done a deep discussion about our fees and charges and what our policies are related to them for many, many, many years. I can't even, it's just been a lot of years. And so, I think that going through this, and maybe there's some ways we can nuance some of it in our charts to make it simple, but this, you know, this is a lot to put together, and it's because, but I think it's time that we probably do a little revisit of it, and make sure it's clear for the council, you're making the decisions, and for our public.
Thanks, Jennifer. Okay. Vice Mayor? All good? Thank you. Councilman Ortiz?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, staff, for answering questions. So, my office has received quite a bit of emails in regards to one fee increase, I think it's the, and they say it's 127% increase in the tenant protections ordinance fee. So, I haven't made my mind up about this, but I did just want to ask the question, what services are going to be essentially available due to the increase of these fees? Do we have any, anyone who can answer this question?
I think Rachel's going to come down to help answer that question.
Thank you. Councilmember Rachel Vanderen, Assistant Director of the Housing Department. So, there are, for the fee that is specifically related to the tenant protection ordinance that you're asking about, there are, first of all, I wanted to just say that it's actually year two of a three-year phase-in for increasing that fee. So, just as Jennifer just mentioned, this actually is an example of one that's going to be increasing over a three-year period. So, this is year two. Now, in, for the specific fee, there's two reasons that it's gone up as much as it has. And so, the first reason is because the fee is actually spread across the total number of units covered by that ordinance, and our staff was doing reconciliation with that total number of units, and realized that the number is actually a smaller number than what they assumed to begin with in, like, last year. So, what happens is then the fee is spread over, it goes up because it's spread over a smaller number of units. So, that's one reason. The second reason is because we have done, again, more analysis on how much time it's taking to respond to eviction. That's the real issue that this is paying for. It's for monitoring evictions across the city. And we also, so anyway, so that is, there's just a lot of activity. So, the activity is very high, and so, that is what's also driving the cost. And then, finally, I just want to say that since our response to COVID-19, we have been able to leverage some federal funds to respond to these things, and we did bring down our fees when we had an eviction moratorium, and all of that over the past couple of years. And now, we've lifted that, and we need to come back and put our fees back to where they've been.
Okay, that makes sense. So, essentially, these are, these fees are going to result in direct services and support for renters. Okay, I just wanted to make sure I got an answer to that. Thank you so much. That's, I believe is the only question, for housing. The second would be, I see that the vacant building fee is being increased for cost recovery. So, I just had questions in regards to how this fee is being enforced, how we're collecting the fee, and then can, because I have quite a few vacant properties of mine, so I'm like, are these people being charged? Like, I don't know if this was, has been dormant for a while. And then, finally, can property owners just pay the fee and then continue to have it vacant?
Rachel Roberts from PBC is going to come down for this one.
Good morning. Thank you, Councilmember Rachel Roberts, Deputy Director of Code Enforcement. So, let me back up to make sure I get all three of your questions, I think. So, the vacant building fee, there's a body of work that happens before the fee is charged. So, when a complaint comes into code enforcement for a vacant building, we go out and respond to that complaint. However, the building has to be in violation... However, the building has to be in violation for 30 days of the same violation before it has to be registered into the program. So there's a amount of work that happens that staff is putting forth that gets basically, at this point, absorbed by the general fund. Once it goes into the monitoring program, then we do charge the fee. It's a quarterly fee, and that's for direct costs related to the time it takes for the inspector to monitor that building. They do an inspection once a month, and there's subsequent stuff that may need to happen as a result of that inspection, such as boardups or citations being issued or correspondence with the property owner and so forth. It's a citywide program. However, as far as the downtown monitoring fee, that fee applies regardless of your violation status. That's for buildings that are vacant or storefronts vacant within the downtown, within a certain boundary, and so that's also charged quarterly, and it's also fee for service for one inspection every quarter versus every month. So because we only have one inspector for that program, it has made it difficult to keep up with the volume, especially through COVID, and therefore, there is probably some revenue that's, that we're not getting to, because we're not able to get the buildings that should be wrapped into that monitoring program as quickly and efficiently as we would like. So that's the main reason for it not being quite cost recovery at this point. As far as whether they pay the fee once it's being, begins being charged, they have to pay that fee until they're in compliance for six months. That's the only way that they can come off of the monitoring, or if they obtain a building permit to improve their building or do some sort of rehab on the building, or if it becomes occupied. So there's certain criteria that they must meet once they're in the monitoring program to be removed from the program and to stop paying that fee.
Okay. Well, I mean, I definitely support the fee. I just had questions if it was being enforced. So I'll follow up with your office following the session. Thank you.
Thanks, Councilmember. Councilwoman Foley?
Thank you. I appreciate all the questions and thoughts about the, this set of the budget. It's something that, you know, we hear that term cost recovery, and my thought is always, how is that recovery determined? Are we really taking all of the income versus less the staff time and factoring it in? And how is that done, especially if it's interdepartmental and all of that? That's just kind of a philosophical question I always have. In looking at the fees, I have a couple of questions about some of the cost recovery items, and in particularly, the first set referred to development and the increase in the inclusionary housing ordinance fee and the increase in the commercial linkage fee. And I'm just wondering, I'm not saying that that's, that cost recovery isn't the goal that we should have, but at what point are we increasing our fees that it's going to cause development not to occur? So I'm curious if Nancy is, or someone is hearing from the development community about these fees and whether that is going to have a negative effect on getting cranes in the sky in downtown San Jose. And I understand, of course, there's economic reasons, where we are in the economic cycle right now, but that's not, I can't control that. We can control the fees, and I'm curious what you're hearing.
Thank you very much for the question. Nancy Klein, Director of Economic Development, Cultural Affairs. There are scheduled or suggested points for us to redo analysis and come back to you. So we wouldn't raise the fees until we've done that analysis and come back. We suppose right now, if we were going to present you the analysis today, it wouldn't be any better, and we wouldn't be recommending a fee increase, but we'd have to do the work to show that that was true. And we do that cohesively as a team with housing, with PBC, with, you know, so we're as a one voice back to you.
Okay. Are you, we had talked about a universal fee at one time. Is that coming to CED at some point then? We'll take a look at all of those collectively?
That's the notion.
Okay, good. Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
I also had a question about the libraries. We, it looks like from time to time, we waive the community fees and we impose the community room fees. When do we waive the library community fees, use fees, community room fees? Sorry, Jill. And while you're down here, I want to also talk about waiving late charges for seniors.
Good morning. Jill Born, City Librarian. And your question is about the waiver for community room fees first? Yes, so I believe the only time that that happened was when we had, through council direction, there was a waiver of $5,000 for community room usage.
Okay, so normally, we are not wavering. A Neighborhood Association wants to use the community room, they pay a rental fee?
In most cases, when the fee is not applied, it's typically through, if it's a partnership program with the city or the library.
Okay, good. And then I know we continue to waive late fees for students, children, but I haven't seen anything about waiving for seniors. Are we, what kind of fees are we imposing, or are we able to waive those as well?
So in the last year's budget, there was a one-time $5,000 waiver for seniors, and so in order to implement that, the library actually created a senior library card. So now folks of a certain age, they will have a certain patron type, and then that allowed us then to waive that amount in late fees, right? But that was in the current fiscal year. Going forward, anyone over the teen years as an adult, 18 and up, would be able to, or sorry, if they return materials late, they do incur late fees.
Okay, so people of a certain age, what is that age, by the way? Just curious.
I think it's 55. That's why I said a certain age.
55, okay. It keeps going, keeps going down.
I know.
As we all age, we're getting closer.
You know, there's those definitions that exist out there.
Yeah, and I don't, that's fine. I don't need that level of detail, but how do we make sure that that program continues for our seniors?
So that would be a council decision.
So we need to make sure that. I would strongly, we encourage, we take a look at that, Jim, if we could. We're not talking a lot of money even, so saying that we're going to waive fees for the seniors enables them to continue to use our libraries, which they want to do, and assist them with isolation, and there's reasons we want them to go to the library, pick up their books, and then go home and read, and then come back. It's just a good thing for our seniors to have that accessibility, but, and we don't want to have them incur fees, fines, and it's not a big, it's not a huge budget issue.
And I would clarify that, to your point, it is, we're only talking about the waiver of late materials that are returned. If an item is never returned, there still is that accountability for all ages, and as the council knows, you've approved a number of programs, and people are able to volunteer away their fines, they're able to read away their fines if there are children, and give back to the community in different ways if, for, you know, if you make the mistake of losing a book. But we are just talking about late return fines.
Right, that's great.
And Jill, could you, how many renewals do people have?
They have three renewals.
And how, and which, how much of a renewal time do they get in each one of those?
Sorry, each one is a three-week renewal, and we actually, I think just prior to the pandemic, implemented auto renewal. So hopefully, you've seen that when you get your email that tells you, well, your book is due, but if it's not on hold for someone else, it's automatically renewed for you. So they get three periods of three weeks each.
Great.
And then, so Councilmember Foley, if you would like that to be considered in the budget, we would appreciate if you issue a BD on that to the mayor's office, because it's, since we've brought forward a balanced budget, we don't have a way to reconsider that during this process right now.
Got it. Thank you. I appreciate that. Mayor, I see my time has gone, but can I, may I continue?
In the spirit of consistency, Councilwoman Torres will remind me that I will come back to you. Sorry, just want to make sure we hear from everybody. I am going to try to keep this agenda moving today. We're on to Councilwoman Batra. Thank you, Councilmember.
Good morning. My question is that when we introduce new service like ADU approvals, can we just do this by the best estimate rather than the tremendous sum of work which goes on allocating different people time? Because to come up with as close as accurate cost, there's a lot of effort going into it. If you just did it on a best estimate basis, will that be a violation of any kind of a law? So you may under-recover or over-recover a little bit. Would there be a problem in that, in saving a lot of time?
Maybe I'll start if Chris wants to jump in. I think that we have to make a, or City Attorney, we have to make a pretty, we have to do our level best to make sure that the fees we're assessing recovers the cost that it takes to provide that service. We can't be over cost recovery, and if we are too far under cost recovery, then that subsidy needs to come from another place. So I think there are limits to what we can practically achieve, you know, not every, not every fee, it probably hits down to the minute, certainly, but we do have to make our level best effort to have a rigorous process to make sure that we can say that the cost we are charging the customer is an appropriate cost.
Right. So that's our legal obligation, is that right?
Jim's looking at me. Thank you, Councilmember. The answer is yes. We have to be reasonable, and the city is very rigorous in how it works up our fees and costs, because we've had, we have had to defend them in the past, and there are state laws that require us to only recover the actual cost of providing a particular service.
Thank you. But we can choose to do things which we want to promote. We can make that the cost recovery will be less than what actually will be costing. We can choose to do that through the council.
Yes, so we just have to make sure that wherever service is being provided, that it's not another fund that already has some other obligation on it or some requirement on it. So that would have to fall to a fund that had no other restrictions, such as the general fund. But yes, certainly, the council could make that call, and that could be part of a policy discussion as part of the budget development process.
Okay, all right. So we'll follow up on that one, as was discussed, for the next year, too late for this year, because I think there are opportunities to promote certain things by proper or reduced fees and all that. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilwoman Davis?
Thank you. Rachel, I have some more questions about the TPO fee. So I understand that the number of units went down, it looks like by almost 20,000. Is that correct? How could we, how could our estimates be so far off? Or our number be so far off?
Yes. Thank you, Councilmember Rachel Vanderbein, Assistant Director of the Housing Department. So we had, in the past, we were using the number of units as 65,560 units, and that, when we basically were doing reconciliation, we brought it down to 47,572. So, yes, so basically, the reason that it was that far off was because we were, it was like the source of data that we were using was estimating, and so we were able to find a better source, and then, and that is how it's actually billed, so we had to make it reconcile with the number, with the number of billings that are going out.
Okay. So you have a third fewer units than you thought you had?
Yes.
What I don't understand is why then, going back to, you had said earlier, we're trying to get back to what we had been charging pre-pandemic, but in 2019, 2020, the per-unit TPO fee was $9 for a total revenue source of $590,000 roughly, and you're proposing to get to a total revenue of over 1.6 million. Why do you need 174% more money when you have a third fewer units?
Okay, so, so we really have, this is like one of our fees within a package. We have our apartment rent ordinance, we have the tenant protection ordinance, and then we have the mobile home ordinance fees, and they all come together. And so as a package, we're moving towards reinstating all of them. The tenant protection ordinance fee itself is going to, is basically, is increasing higher than the other two are as we move through our three-year phase in.
And why is that?
And the reason is because we've taken a look at all of the staff time that it takes to respond to eviction, and it is, it is much higher than we have, than we had estimated or included in our staff time in the past.
So remind me, first of all, who, which type of units pays, pay the TPO fee?
Yeah, okay, that's a good question. So it's any apartment building that was built after 1979 and has three units or more. And so it is, that number can actually grow over time as market rate development is built, then those buildings are the ones that are covered by the tenant protection ordinance.
So the mural across the street pays TPO?
Yes, exactly.
Okay. So I am concerned that this, last year's fee was $15 per unit.
Yes, $15, yes.
This year's fee is proposed to be $34.
Correct.
More than double. What is next year's fee?
Yeah, next year's fee.
Likely to be?
Yeah, 3487. So it's closer to $35 is the, is next year's.
Okay. So if, if developers are looking right now at what the fees have been and how they have changed since the inception of this fee, there may be a chilling effect on development as they are doing their spreadsheets, especially if they're adding in a percentage and assuming these large percentages every year. That 3487, is that being discussed at all with any of our apartment owners and with developers in general, so that they know that it's not going to go more than double again next year? Because if they were looking at this, it went from, even if you took out the pandemic, it went from nine to 15 to 34.
Right, understood. So, yes, we have had conversations with property owners about our fee structures, and we held a commission meeting specifically on this topic to discuss it in more detail, and have reached out by email across the board to let people know about it.
So since it's going to go up by much less next year, would there be any way to maybe split that difference so that it doesn't go up by so much, by more than double in one year, and then a minuscule amount next year, so that we can maybe have people allow for owners to have time to absorb this cost and prepare for it?
I think that's something that we could consider, especially since it is a three-year phased change. I think that we can, we have time to look at that over a longer period of time.
I would highly recommend that, Jim, if you could take another look at that, because more than doubling a fee in one year, when, I know we have high inflation right now, and there, I know that our, many of our property owners are trying not to raise rents by too much to allow for more folks to stay, to stay housed, as the wages are not increasing as much as people's grocery bills, for example. So we need to take it into account, not just what's going on in your department. And by the way, I understand not, not estimating correctly in the early years how much staff time it was going to take. What I don't understand is when you're cutting the number of units that you think you're serving by a third, not having a commensurate reduction in expectations for staff.
And, Councilwoman, I think what we can do, we can take that back. The Budget Office in Housing can work to come up with some other options for the council to consider. to consider as part of a separate manager's budget that we'll release in the next couple of weeks.
Thank you, I appreciate that. That's it for me.
Thanks, Councilmember. Appreciate the questions and very much agree, we need to take another look at that and I think as was noted, I mean, this is largely going to get just passed on to the tenants. This is driving up costs for our, for our residents. Okay, let's go back around. We're on to Councilmember Foley.
I turn again, yay. And the timing was good because Councilmember Davis asked all of my questions about TPO so I don't need to go over that again, but, but I agree with the concerns about that. I do have a couple of questions about the card room fees being decreased and the cannabis fees being increased. Can you give me some background on that?
Yeah, I'll let the Police Department come down here, I think, see who wants to come down here, but it is, again, this is part of our reassessment of the cost it takes to provide those services, which classifications are providing the service and the time it takes. But I'll see if there's any other nuance that the Police Department wants to provide on both the cannabis fees and the card room fees.
So specifically, as, as I look at these two numbers and one going down and one going up, they should be commensurate with the amount of staff time or oversight needed with the card rooms and cannabis. So if it's going down, are, are you suggesting, Chief, that the fees or the, the time involved is going down with card rooms and going up with cannabis?
So Paul Joseph, Assistant Chief of Police, and I'm with Wendy Salazi, who is our Division Manager for the Cannabis Regulation. With the cannabis, the amount of outlets being expanded, that is something where we anticipate greater costs. And actually, I'll let Wendy speak to that some more.
Thanks, Chief. Wendy Salazi, Division Manager, Cannabis Regulation. With the, with the fees for our services, it's based on the number of businesses and staffing time it takes. Are you looking at a specific fee and just the annual operating fee?
Just the annual operating fee that said on page 15 that the fee was going up for cannabis and down. And I understand that we have more, more licenses that have been issued, but that hasn't yet equated nor is it likely to equate to actually more storefronts yet because of the difficulties in, in the land use questions.
Yes, correct. So next year, we did still maintain the activity level of 16 businesses, so we didn't anticipate an increase and we didn't change our staffing levels. But we did evaluate, there are staff involved in, in the fee from the Police Department, Finance Department, City Attorney's Office, and Code Enforcement. And there was a slight increase in the time for Code Enforcement time. And then we did evaluate for the Police Department staffing time. Our time is spread amongst all of the fees that are in that program, so we did reevaluate how much time was being spent on regulating the businesses versus some of their other things like the background investigations, that's an application receipt fee, I believe that one's called, and some of the other ones. So those fees might have changed a little bit because more of our time is in the regulatory of the businesses that are operating.
Okay.
And on the, the card room side, just, I know there was talking to staff, just a little bit of the refinement of the individual FTEs, both in the Police Department and the City Attorney's Office that, that work on that program and their costing and their, both their costing and their allocations shifted slightly, which resulted in some slightly lower costs.
Okay. So some more efficiencies are benefiting us on the card room side. I'm concerned on the cannabis side that we're overtaxing and overregulating and over, not overregulating, but that we're overtaxing in relation to the income, to, because we, I don't want us to be at the point that we think, okay, cannabis and card rooms to, for that matter, that we can tax more because we can get away with it. I want us to be thoughtful about it. We want to expand the businesses and are we imposing fees that actually make sense? And, and I'm actually looking at the annual operating fee that is almost 140,000 for the cannabis, but it may be, I don't know if that's an impediment to, to starting a new business or not. I just, something I'm thinking about, it's just interesting that one's going down and the other's going up and I accept the explanation, so thank you. Thanks. The next question I had was, oh, great, and I'm almost out of time again. We have neighborhood block parties that the fee was waived last year. Are we going to continue that this year? I couldn't, I didn't find it or notice it.
Yeah, pardon me, yeah, the, so that was, that, that fee was set to zero on an ongoing basis as part of the adoption of the 2223 budget. So the, the permit requirement is still there, but it's a no-cost permit.
Okay, good. I'm happy to hear that. That allows us, our neighborhood groups to have their block parties. Wonderful. That's it for me, thank you.
Great, thanks, Councilmember. Okay, that appears to exhaust our questions on fees and charges. So we're going to now transition to an overview of the proposed capital budget.
Thank you, Mayor. We'll need a few minutes to re, to reset here.
Sounds good. Matt, are we ready to go? Awesome. All right, why don't we jump in? We're a little behind schedule. We're going to jump into our proposed capital budget.
Hi, Mayor, it's my pleasure here to introduce, to turn over the rest of the presentation today to a couple of different folks. So we've got Claudia Chang, our Deputy Budget Director, who not only is a key member of the management team in Budget Office, but is playing a utility player role and subbing in as our capital budget coordinator while we had Stuart Patri, who is on paternity leave. And then joining her for the second half will be Matt Lesch, who are Acting Public Works Director. So I will turn it over to them to get us started.
Good morning, Mayor, Councilmembers and members of the public. Thank you for giving us this opportunity to present the capital budget to you today. I'd like to quickly note that this budget could not have been developed without the assistance of staff from various departments. I want to acknowledge them and thank them for their hard work. Without them, there would be no capital budget. There are 14 capital programs that are aligned with the different city service areas. This slide may look familiar because we had used it in the overview for the budget study session, but I just want to reiterate that the proposed budget reflects a $5.2 billion recommended spending plan across 137 different funds. This budget is below the 2223 adopted budget of $6 billion, which includes carryover funds from the 2122 fiscal year. The total city budget will grow during the next phase of this budget process due to rebudgets into the next fiscal year. As you can see from the pie chart, we have three major components to our budget. In order of size, the special funds comprise a 54% of the budget, with the largest components being airport, environmental services, clean energy, and housing funds. And then there's a general fund, which totals 26%, and capital funds make up the remaining 20%. This presentation will focus on the capital funds and the 14 different capital programs. With over 7,000 employees, the city is the third-largest employer in San Jose. Here is a historical comparison of the various budgets over a five-year period. For fiscal, for fiscal year 2428, the budget totals $3.2 billion. In the next budget phase, we determine which projects and initiatives won't be completed this fiscal year and will re-budget the money into 2324 as needed. After you account for this, the 2428 CIP will be more than the 2327 CIP. You may notice that for fiscal year 2024, that is by far the largest CIP. The reason being is that in November of 2018, San Jose residents passed the Measure T Disaster Preparedness, Public Safety, and Infrastructure Bond. This measure authorized the city to issue up to $650 million in general obligation bonds for investments in city infrastructure, including upgrades to emergency and disaster response facilities, road construction, flood protection, water quality protection, and improvements to other critical infrastructure. Here is a list of category of the funding sources of the $3.2 billion capital budget. We'll go into more depth for the top five categories listed here. The largest funding source is a category called contributions, loans, and transfers. The largest transfers of funds are from the Sewer Service and Use Charge Fund to the Water Pollution Control Capital Program, which equates to about $277 million, and to the Sanitary Sewer System Capital Program, which is about $175 million. Fees paid by users of the Sanitary Sewer System are used for capital projects in both of these programs. The next largest transfer is a transfer from the Airport Operating Funds to the Airport Capital Funds, which is about $150 million. The General Fund contributes or transfers a total of $66.2 million to the capital budget. The General Fund pays for capital projects with no other dedicated funding source. This includes $19 million for fire apparatus replacement that's budgeted in the Public Safety Capital Program and approximately $15 million for the replacement of radios and other equipment in the Silicon Valley Regional Communications System and the associated maintenance contract, staffing, and participation in this joint powers authority that is budgeted in the communications program. Lastly, there's a $44 million transfer from the Water Utility Fund to the Water Utility Capital Fund. Revenues collected from the users of the five water districts is used to pay for capital projects. The next slide is about the beginning fund balance, which is about $658 million. The beginning fund balance is made up of money carried over from the prior years. There are plans for most of this money pending the determination of a final scope for projects, final project locations, and our availability of future funding. On the next slide, we discuss financing proceeds, which is about $450 million. Bonds will be issued for the Measure T program totaling close to $206 million. This is the third and final issuance. Money will go to traffic, about $159 million, public safety, 28 million of that funding, storm sewer, about 15 million, and parks, 6 million, to complete these vital Measure T projects. In the Water Pollution Control Capital Program, about $190 million of wastewater revenue notes will be issued for the implementation of capital improvement projects identified in the Plant Master Plan. In the Water Utility Program, over 50 million in commercial paper is expected to be issued for the Water Resources Administration and Operations Facility, as well as the Advanced Metering Infrastructure Improvements Project in 2324. The next category is revenue from other agencies and that totals over $700 million. It's always good to use other people's money to do our work. Pavement maintenance revenues from the State Gas Tax and the State Road Repair and Accountability Act of 2017 provides over $140 million in the traffic capital program. And in the storm capital program, there are three grants from the State of California totaling $21 million to support the construction of green stormwater infrastructure products. We receive about $156 million of federal funding. That includes TSA and FAA grants for airport projects. We have another category, which is regional wastewater user facilities, which contribute over $208 million for capital projects at the Water Pollution Control Plant. Lastly, there is revenue from local agencies, about $145 million, which derives most of its funding from the Santa Clara Valley Transportation Authority to fund pavement maintenance. Taxes, fees, and charges make up close to $543 million of funding for the programs. Construction and conveyance taxes, also known as CNC, is primarily generated by private property sales. Based on the city council-approved distribution formula, the $215 million anticipated to be received in this CIP will be distributed to parks, libraries, fire, service yards, park yards, and communications programs. Due to a slowdown in the local real estate market, CNC collections are anticipated to be 40 million this year and remain flat for another two years and then increase to 45 million in '25, '26, and '26, '27. This is significantly below the 2122 collection level of $64 million. Airport passenger facility charges is the second-largest item in this category at $145 million. This fee is charged to every employed passenger at the San Jose-Manetta International Airport. The proceeds are used for debt service or capital projects. The third-largest category is the Building and Structure Construction Tax at $95 million. This tax is imposed upon the construction, repair, or improvement of any building or structure where a building permit is required. The proceeds from the Building and Structure Construction Tax are strictly, are restricted by ordinance for use in the traffic capital program. The last category I'd like to discuss here is the Construction Excise Tax, also referred to as the Commercial Residential Mobile Home Park Building Tax. This tax, projected to be $82 million during this CIP, is imposed upon the construction, alteration, repair, or improvement of any building or structure that is for residential or commercial purposes or is, or is associated with a mobile home. It funds projects in the traffic capital program. We just finished talking about the various funding sources for the capital program. The second half of the presentation will focus on expenditures. This chart shows where the $3.2 billion investments will be made. The traffic capital program makes up close to 27% of the budget, followed closely by the Water Pollution Control Plant at 24% and then airport at 14% and parks and community facilities at 10%.
This platform that's being used here to display this data is near and dear to my heart. It's something we built in the GIS Enterprise Team on behalf of and with the Office of Racial Equity. It is empowered by, empowered by the Equity Atlas that is published on our website and it is a combination of two tools. Our neighborhood map that was developed with your council offices or your predecessor council offices that has demographic information to the neighborhood level, then also has the specific atlas to these different neighborhoods that has race and income levels that are current compared to the American Community Survey of 2021. This displays just This displays just one aspect of one of the programs and the impact of where these investments are, and staff is using these tools to lean into the discussions of equity and project prioritization. The Department of Transportation has done yeoman effort over years in evaluating where their work is done and how this work is impacting our community. Staff is learning how to use these tools, the impact of the location of their work, the pooling of those that are served, and how to improve the services in other areas due to the service impacts of these new locations. An example of this, paving projects are very hard to locate because they're linear projects as opposed and cover many neighborhoods, and so we're studying and learning how to do this, and staff is learning how to then record these discussions and then also will be reporting in. Public Works is doing this on several of our projects as well, and you'll see these in forthcoming council memos. The takeaway from this current screen is that of the traffic safety program investments, 70% of them, or over 2/3 of them, are in areas with a project equity score of 8 to 10, which are the two highest buckets of scores. The higher the score means the higher level of poverty and the greater racial diversity in the neighborhoods, so a massive investment in the traffic capital in these underserved areas. I'm going to do my very best to slice through several, many of the programs here and give highlights, and then also highlight some of the programs that are included in there. Public Works is by no means the deliverer of all these projects and programs. If it would be, everyone in the audience would need a microphone because they are leading it with us. We are partners with them in leading some of this large construction, but they lead the major programs and funding decisions around many of these initiatives. The CIP is developed by staff knowledge of their assets and where things are in relation to all of the other programs and projects. We have planning documents that guide our thinking, whether it's the envisioned 2020 general plan or the master plans around parks and the airport and the regional wastewater facility. We also have this infrastructure backlog, which has been referenced several times. We're given direction and guidance from the mayor's budget message and council discussions. Now, we also have public hearings and public meetings around our work. You'll see all of these programs, the CIP alignments, all of these different buckets and categories align with our general plan. In the first category here we'll talk about is on the Measure T program. It's not a CSA bucket, but it is obviously a very large investment that's given to us in November of 2018 of $650 million in general obligation bond. You'll see the buckets of categories of the work that was allocated and what's included in this five-year CIP. For the next foreseeable future, you'll focus on, will be focusing on the design and construction of many projects, in particular some relocation and building of fire stations, the police training center. But in the next few months or so, you'll see bids and awards that'll be coming forward for Fire Stations 8 and 32, the police training facility, the hangar complex, the 911 center, and several community centers as well. As well as the image that's displayed there is the River Oaks Regional Stormwater Capture Facility, really a groundbreaking, very interesting project that we're working on now. We have two collection systems that we'll talk about. First is the Sanitary Sewer System. That collection system is about 2,000 miles of pipes and about 40,000 manholes and 17 pump stations. There will have key investments, and the priorities of this category are these capacity improvements and rehabilitation of that system. On the storm sewer system, that collection system is about 1,100 miles of pipes and 29,000 manholes, and there's about 35,000 catch basins at our intersections, 1,700 outfalls, one of which you see there, trusted number 88F, everybody's favorite, and 31 pump stations. And you have a large trash capture device that's included there. Our focus for the next period is going to be in Measure T-funded projects. We're going to alleviate flooding and drainage improvements in the Charcot area and regional green stormwater projects to capture, filter, and treat our stormwater. The regional wastewater facility, roughly 25% of the CIP included here, is owned and operated by San Jose and Santa Clara, City of Santa Clara, and serves eight cities and four special districts, has a CIP of about $780 million in five years, and 178 in just this next fiscal year. It is guided by the Plant Master Plan, over $2 billion of investment of 30 years and 100 capital projects. In this next period, the focus will be on these upgrades, these rehab and seismic projects and modernizations. The municipal water facility, sorry, the municipal water system serves about 120,000 of our residences in about five distinct areas. They have about 345 miles of mains and 17 reservoirs, 15 pump stations, and 14 wells that they manage and maintain. In this next period, you can see that there's some new facility development where there's new wells and improvement of existing services. Our library system has 25 branches, 25 facilities that they manage, but the CIP funds not just the acquisition, sorry, not just the facility repair and improvements, but also the acquisition of physical and electronic materials and installation of automation equipment. In this next period, we'll be focused a bunch on the projects supporting the Build Forward Library Infrastructure Grant that they received and was supporting those projects as well. The parks, parks facilities, there's 213 park sites, about 3,600 acres under their care, and 12 community centers and 65 miles of trails. This five-year CIP has about 200 major projects and about 100 smaller projects to invest in our parks and community centers and trails. A few key projects that are listed in there are the all-inclusive at the Allbutin Lake Park, the Spartan Keys Area Park Development, and the Coyote Creek Trail Work that's underway now. As noted in Measure T and Public Safety, there's many investments going on through Measure T. For the fire stations, there's 34 of them and 214 apparatuses. Maybe it's apparati, if I practiced my Latin correctly, I'm apologies. Sister Mary Gale would be disappointed to me. The focus on the Measure T projects are the key, especially you'll see this next bit with Fire Station 32 and 36, and Fire Station 8 and 23 coming forward as well. The airport has many make-ready projects that are getting ready for the new terminal expansion. They have master plan projects for efficiency and safety and accessibility in their investment, and you can see it's a very large investment of $460 million over the next investment period. For the parking CIP, they have 2,200 meters and six lots and eight garages that they manage and maintain through this. A key focus for this period is going to be the surface parking improvements at the Deardon S.A.P. area and on-street parking modernization, as well as the surface preparations for the new facade at the Market and Sepeiro Garage. As Claudia noted, the traffic CIP is humongous. They have a massive remit of 2,500 miles of streets and 500 miles of bikeways. It is a multimodal transportation system. They also manage the trees of 350,000 trees and 120,000 signs. They have a lot of big number things in these groups. They have 58,000 lights and 970 traffic signals, and in addition to 240 bridges. A key area of focus this investment period is things to align to the Better Bike Plan, Vision Zero, and the General Plan 2040. They have their investment programs through Measure T and through the massive paving programs that you're seeing. The communication system that is managed by the Department of Public Works is one of those systems that you hope to never hear about because it just works every time our first responders need it. We have 27 sites that we manage. They have 3,300 radios, the receivers that the officers and firefighters use that are connected to the interoperable system. We also have 1,500 radios that our legacy system is connected to for our Parks Rangers, our animal control officers, and our DOT crews. In this next period, we'll be investing in some end-of-life investments in terms of radios that need to be replaced over this next period. Our municipal improvements, though the budget is small, it is a massive infrastructure. There are over almost 3 million square feet under management by the facilities group for maintenance and repair. In several of these large projects that are going to be invested in over this next period, you'll see under these HVAC or under our heating and cooling systems at the Performing Arts Center, at the Museum of Art, and also at the Tech Interactive, in addition to several of the smaller investment, the animal care facilities, and EV charging assessments. We have four service yards that cover about seven and a half acres. We have invested in them regularly. This is where many of our field staff are maintaining their work and maintaining their equipment. We have some investments there in roofing and painting and so forth, and a water main replacement at the central service yard. And finally, last but not least, we have our developer-assisted projects. Generally and mostly invested, you'll see here is these Rule 20A and Rule 20B projects that are the undergrounding projects. 20A are the ones that are funded by utility providers, largely PG&E, and 20B are the ones funded by the developer in Lufy, and so you'll see a list of projects there that we're focusing on through this next period. That concludes our presentation of a very quick overview. We'll note and last in there with this image of the art that was included in one of the Measure T projects at one of the community center investments. We're here for questions. Many staff are here as well.
Great, thank you. While my colleagues think about questions they may want to ask, can we go back to the road paving equity screen map? Put that back up. Sorry, I know it was many slides ago. Great, thank you. So I'm really glad that we're doing this work. In fact, I put a BD in a couple of years ago to get an equity analyst. I know you were working on this even before then, but to have more capacity for doing this kind of equity analysis. So I'm glad they're doing the work. The concern I have is that while a majority of the projects are located in areas with a high equity score, it looks to me like most of the dollars are going elsewhere. Can you just help explain why the majority of the dollars seem to be going to D9 and D10? Is that because of a couple of really large projects, or am I misreading the chart?
Looking for one of our DOT friends to provide the clarity.
Oh, those are deciles. Okay, I'm so sorry. I glanced at the numbers and thought we had 10. They're deciles, not districts. Okay. Excellent. I didn't even see, yep, one is, okay, then, misreading the chart. Okay, just wanted to make sure we didn't have 63% of the dollars going to D9, D10, though I do live in D10. Okay. Yeah, all right. Let's see if folks have their hands up. Okay, looks like we're pretty satisfied with the capital budget. Councilmember Jimenez?
Let me just make a plug for, you know, District 2 has one of the oldest community centers in the city, the South Side Community Center, and there really is no immediate, foreseeable future, any money that's going to come in to help rebuild that. And so we're actively, I think there was an RFP that went out sometime back to sort of join forces with the developer, and so I just wanted to highlight that for my colleagues that whenever that comes up, to keep that in mind. We're trying to give our seniors a new home in District 2, if you will. Thank you.
Appreciate the plug. All right, going once. Any other comments or questions? Okay, great. Guys got off easy this morning. Looks like we are on to the capital program review by CSA. Is that? Not sure why that's called out as a separate item here. Is that it? Okay, I have it as two separate items. You gave the overview there. Okay. Then we can, let's see, we are at 11:05, so we can go on to, I think we can pull forward from the afternoon session at this point if that works for city staff. Is that possible?
Yes, Mayor, if you can give us five minutes to get the correct folks down here, we can begin.
Okay, so, thank you, Lee. So we'll recess for five and then begin with the Governance and Management Approach focus Back. Now we're going to jump into our final study session in an area that is near and dear to my heart, which is looking at how we can continue to improve how we do governance and manage the effectiveness of our spending and our program and our policies. And, and really, I think the goal here at a very high level, before I turn it over to staff, is to really empower the council to be well informed and aligned around what are our priorities, how do we measure success, what are the big bets? And the hope here would be, I think it's great that this is kind of at the end of our budget study sessions, that we learn and evolve and iterate together as a group year over year, because we're really explicit about how we measure success, what bets we're making, where the dollars are going, and we have a clear feedback loop. We have this regular feedback that helps us understand, are the bets paying off? Are they working? Are they working as well as we thought? If not, what are the alternatives? And to just really give us a, a tighter, more aligned way of learning as a council and being really explicit and intentional about how we spend our dollars to, which should inform next year's budget process. So I'm very excited about what this can mean for the way that we all make governance decisions together and how our city can operate as effectively as possible. So with that, I will turn it over to city staff. I think I'm going to Assistant City Manager Lee Wilcox to kick this off.
Thank you, Mayor. Good morning, Mayor, Council. Joining me as a part of the presentation today are Deputy City Managers Rosalynn Huey, Rob Lloyd, Omar Passins, and filling in for Angel Rios and the City Manager's Office, Chief of Staff Dolan Bechel, and then Eric Jensen. So you'll be hearing from all of us today as we move forward. As a reminder, as directed by the council's approval of the March Budget Message, we were directed to come back and walk through how we would be focusing, measuring, and coming back to you on a regular basis around the investment priorities or the focus areas that were outlined in the March message. So we're going to do that today. We're going to talk a little bit about how we plan to move forward as execution is learning around several of these endeavors, so that we can succeed quick or fail very quickly and learn from that, and how we will be coming back to you on a quarterly basis. As a reminder, for today's study session, as the mayor outlined, we're focusing in on these four investment areas, reducing unsheltered homelessness, increasing community safety, cleaning up our neighborhoods, and attracting investment through jobs and in housing. Again, this is above what we've spent the last several days together doing in this room, is looking at the 23, 24, 98 core services and 264 programs that are carried out over proposed employee count of 7,033 in this year's budget, and within the city service, city service delivery framework that we've gone over, over the last day, each of the city service areas. As we look at these four areas, the administration does recognize that we do need different approaches that require focus, data and measurement, and time, that are sometimes different from the ones that are called out and the ones that we've spent the last several days walking through with you. This is our attempt to do that. As Jennifer pointed out in her opening comments, in addition to the 264 programs that we run on a daily basis, you, as a council, have asked us to tackle big problems that face our community, our organization, and this council. This requires a great deal of leadership in the organization, management capacity to drive change through the organization, sometimes be, can be complex in and itself, but is overly complex in these cases because it involves much more outside of our own boundaries. These challenges, as we talked about during the priority setting session two months ago now, they come outside of our own border, out of our own authority as a city sometimes. They're often symptoms of another problem or several problems. In many cases, there's new, there's new, no proven solution. And when there are solutions, they're not always true or false. They're values based and require us to approach things differently so you, as our elected leaders, can balance those different values and make decisions. These urgent and important initiatives occur for several reasons, which is shifting community needs, societal changes, federal and state mandates, often policies that are made at other levels without the context of how it'll affect other government entities, such as local government. In addition, the, the four investment priorities that the council approved in March with the March Budget Message align with what a lot of people throughout the state right now feel, quite frankly. So in February, the Public Policy Institute of California released its new government findings report, which they do every other month. Seven out of 10 residents in the state of California felt that the issues of homelessness, crime, the economy were the top three things that needed, the government needed to tackle, at least at a state level. In addition, for the first time since Public Policy Institute of California initiated this poll, 72% of all residents throughout all regions of the state identified increases in unsheltered populations in their community, possible rise in crime, which is not necessarily true, but that's how people felt, as well as a worsening or worrying of where the economy was headed. So quite frankly, the things that you face as elected officials and our elected body and our leaders of our community, people feel throughout the state, not just in the city of San Jose, which is important. The other thing that's important in how we move forward in this process, and I'll talk about execution as learning in a second, but for the first time, the administration really realizing and budgeting that we need to spend a certain amount of time outside of our own city hall, working with other jurisdictions, much more purposefully and focused, with clear asks and deliverables, especially around the crime initiative or the homeless initiative or focus areas, sorry. We deal with complex ecosystems of public policy and operations. Each of these areas or agencies brings forward other things into those conversations. Each organization's public value is very distinct. At times, their regulations are very different than ours, as well as their resource and limitations. So as we move forward and we have these conversations with you on a, on a quarterly basis, we'll be talking about those efforts, whether it's with the state of California, Valley Water, working with the judges at a local level around crime, the Office of Reentry Services and the Sheriff's Office, which play a huge role in, in how we move forward, as well as the county and all of our community-based organizations helping fill the gaps when, when it comes to unsheltered, our unsheltered community. So those will be on the forefront of several of those conversations. And as we move forward, and I've mentioned execution as learning a few times, these big challenges that you've asked us to focus on deal with people's lives in many cases. So a great deal of planning and complexity goes into that. However, we need to move rapidly because it does involve people's lives. So we will be trying to succeed quickly, but also fail. I think a lot of people say fail forward. Not exactly sure what that means, other than it's, we need, if we're going to fail, we need to do it quick and be able to learn from it with the 11 of you and pivot and change. And so that's how we will be approaching a lot of that. Secondly, we need to empower collective learning across our organization, which we do really well in our organization with the city service areas, working across departments, our deputy city managers that see, oversee the city service area, really the curator and facilitator of that information sharing across departments in several cases, but departments do it really well. Where we need to do a better job is outside our own, own organization, as we, we talked about, and we'll be working on that with several of the initiatives here. Third, we need to promote psychological safety for our teams to be able to fail. Unlike a lot of private businesses that can fail many times, when we fail in this room, it's very public. It can put us in an untenable situation with the 11 of you trying to talk about those things. It also can put the 11 of you in difficult positions with your community. And so we need to create a narrative and better have a two-way conversation and allow our teams to be able to take risks, learn, iterate, and move forward. Lastly, we need to simplify complexity through iteration and experimentation. So I know several people dislike the word bureaucracy. I just want to say, as the chief operating officer for the organization, I actually think it's a beautiful thing. You know, bureaucracy does two things really well. It swarms an issue. It gives more resources, resources towards an issue at a lot of times than it needs at the very beginning. And it breaks it up into bite-sized chunks so that something complex can become simple, and then it gets pieced together in the end and right-sized. That's what we need to do with some of these areas. We haven't necessarily resourced these four investment areas in the past as we would have liked, or several of you would have liked, but we need to be able to do what bureaucracy does and take these very complex things and make them simple for the teams in the field, you as decision makers, which we will walk through the scorecards, and then make adjustments as we move forward. And so we do need to obviously do things differently, which we're going to walk through today, but take some of the basic principles of where bureaucracy does really well in breaking down complexity and making it simple to these very complex, important issues that we'll be walking through today. And jumping into the how we're going to get there, I'm turning it over to Dolan Bechel.
Thank you, Lee. For those of you following the presentation, this is actually the what, but it's somehow as well. So moving on to that portion on the next slide here, for each of the four proposed budget investment, proposed budget investment areas, Lee mentioned earlier, there will be a focus area cabinet and execution team directly aligning with each of these four investment areas. I will discuss the models for the cabinets and execution teams and then provide an example of each for the cleaning up our neighborhoods focus area. The model for the cabinet shown here has an accountable deputy city manager and responsible director or directors reporting directly to the city manager and assistant city manager for the focus area. Effective communications, community engagement, and continued focus on performance as reported via scorecard, which we'll talk about later, are foundational to each cabinet. Five details about each of the four cabinets are, one, the cabinet is accountable for driving performance to achieve outcomes. Two, the structure allows for rapid escalation and solution of issues. The cabinet enables the execution team's success, including creation of a safe space to be accountable, which means taking risks, experiment, failing, and quickly learning. This is where policy and trade-off decisions, especially cross-departmental decisions, including resources and budget, can be made and executed with confidence, and the cabinets will meet at least monthly, but certainly as needed when necessary. Next, I'll discuss the execution teams, which are empowered by the cabinet, so they are able to execute with confidence and speed on their goals. The execution team model shown here includes key members of our staff reporting to the assistant city manager and accountable deputy city manager, who will carry forward the context of the goals and the decisions made by the cabinet into the execution teams. The execution teams are structured to enable collective action around performance and outcomes in coordination with our cross-jurisdictional executional partners. By design, the execution teams enable knowledge sharing across departments and external partners. So while execution team members will have a home in their department or organization, they'll also have a second home in their execution team, where they will contribute their knowledge and expertise to the greater team. The execution team design here is based largely on proven organizational, cross-organization teaming techniques successfully employed by both the private sector and the public sector. And the execution teams will continue to utilize San Jose-proven agile concepts, including objectives as measured by key results or OKRs, which will continue the key results that seek to close racial disparities. These teams will meet frequently, and each focus area will likely have a slightly different cadence, which may be daily or weekly. So thank you for suspending your disbelief. I'm going to pull it all together here with an example of a fully designed cleaning up our neighborhoods focus area cabinet and execution team. So Angel Rios, who is not able to be here today, will be meeting monthly with Jennifer and Lee, or more often, along with the responsible directors you see here. Angel, supported by Omar Passins, will drive the execution team and coordination with the external partners, just some of which for cleaning up our neighborhoods are listed here. We have worked carefully not to overload any one particular individual, which we do often from time to time. The appropriate assistant director, deputy director, division manager, or similar staff will show up in the execution teams, but they show up as fully empowered team members. In the interest of time, I'm not going to read all the names in detail. So now we're moving on to our reported, reporting approach, which is rooted in two deliverables, scorecards and dashboards. We developed these recommendations based on best practices and building on past city experience, including direct city and council input on the quarterly city initiatives roadmap reporting for both overall volume and granularity of key results. We had a promotional study by Harvard Business School to review and provide us feedback. We researched experience and, we did research and experience on leading practices for program management and executive reporting, and we also decided it was important to decouple a very focused council quarterly scorecard for council deliberations from a broader and deeper interactive dashboard, and I'll explain that more in detail. I'm now going to turn the presentation over to Eric Jensen to discuss the design of the scorecards for each of the four focus areas.
So the primary tool for reporting progress to council is a scorecard, the concept shown here, which we will have one for each of the four focus areas. These scorecards will provide a snapshot into the most important measures of outcomes and performance alongside key contextual information related to scope, budget, and accomplishments. The scorecard at a high level has one outcome measure with data related to plans, actuals, and goals, and is disaggregated by race, ethnicity, and geography where possible and appropriate. Underpinning the outcome measure are three or four performance measures to help us understand how well the city is delivering on its programs. These also have plan, actual, and goals alongside disaggregation, again, where possible and appropriate. Supporting these measures in the gray are details related to the program's scope, budget, actual milestones, and challenges and solutions. So for each of the four focus areas, the deputy city manager, responsible and accountable for that area, and assistant city manager, will be sharing the proposed, the proposed scorecard measures with Dolan covering for Angel. Lee will start with the increasing community safety focus area.
Thank you, Eric. So as the first one, as our main outcome, we'll be looking at the percentage of residents rating the city as very safe or somewhat safe. This is a proposal that has been recommended from the administration, but also came forward through the transition committee. through the transition committee, and our source of information is going to be the community opinion survey. So that's done on an annual basis, but we'll be looking at doing that on a quarterly basis so that we can measure that. Driving that, and we'll be looking at the measurement of percentage of shame around incidents and property crime types, as well as violent crime rates, and then last but not least, injury crash reports. As we come forward, you'll be seeing the various programs that are behind this, as well as any key dependencies or risks, or anything else to do with what we're doing with outside organizations, so that we become very transparent with our policymakers of why something has gone down, or why something's gone up, if it's something around our own operations, or if we're waiting for one of our third parties or agencies that we work with to go ahead and make those changes. So you'll be seeing what the increasing community safety focus area scorecard will look just like this until October, when it's filled in with data.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. Omar Passon's deputy city manager. This title of this focus area reflects the mayor and council's direction, as mentioned earlier, with regard to placing a great deal of focus on reducing unsheltered homelessness. This focus area will, of course, include further alignment and urgent action around homelessness prevention, permanent housing, and managing impacts of the homelessness crisis. In addition to the city's ongoing work in developing an implementation plan for the community plan to end homelessness, this focus area will further drive alignment across city departments to ensure a one-team response internally, and, as Lee alluded to earlier, enhanced coordination with a variety of external partners. There will be focus on efforts that will get people into shelter or housing. As this slide indicates, that overarching top-line metric, the percent change in number of people experiencing unsheltered homelessness, there are a few sources for that data that we have available to us. Then you can see the four sort of performance measures associated along that next line: 1,000 safe shelter opportunities, the percent of households receiving prevention services that retain that housing after a year, percent of San Jose households remaining housed one year after moving into permanent housing, et cetera. And so that just gives you a snapshot. Again, that just helps contextualize a little bit, and now I will pass it on to Dolan.
Thanks, Omar. So filling in for Angel for cleaning up our neighborhoods focus area scorecard. The proposed most important outcome is the city cleanup rating, with the metric being the percentage of residents rating cleanup of litter and trash as excellent or good. This metric is in the city service area, and it was identified in the mayoral transition committee. This metric is already available disaggregated by race and ethnicity and location at a high level. We will move it to a quarterly survey, and we'll get the location down to a much more granular level, and of course, do it on a quarterly basis. So the most important performance measures that staff will be working on to drive the outcome in the right direction we are proposing is, one, the beautify SJ Blight response time, with the reported metric being the percent of graffiti removal, illegal dumping, and encampment trash services inquiries responded to within response times; two, the code enforcement case backlog, with the reported metric being the percent change in code enforcement cases backlog; and then, three, the San Jose 311 customer satisfaction, with the reporting metric being percent of customers' satisfaction scores by service type, that being graffiti, illegal dumping, junk pickup, and abandoned vehicles. When I follow up with the discussion on the dashboard, I'll show how these higher-level measures will be reported in their disaggregated form in the dashboard, so that all that information is available to council and community. And next, for the fourth dashboard, I'm turning it over to Rosalyn and Rob.
Great. Thank you so much, Dolan. Rosalyn Hui, deputy city manager. For this focus area, attracting investment in jobs and housing, I'm actually sharing this work, overseeing it with my colleague, Rob Lloyd. And this focus area is actually a combination of two different topics that were explored during the transition committee process. So the first one was planning and permitting, so that's everything regarding our development services. And then the second one is downtown vibrancy, and our focus and our aspiration for creating more vibrancy in our downtown. So our two outcome measures, first, obviously, we're going to be tracking the change in new jobs and new housing units each year throughout the city. And then for downtown vibrancy, we're going to be looking at the change from year to year of the number of people who are actually visiting our downtown. In terms of our performance measures, we have three noted here. For housing production, one of the targets we're going to be working with our development services partners is the percentage of housing units that are receiving their planning permits within a processing time target. So we're working now to establish that baseline target. I will note that this target depends on, obviously, the critical path for any housing development project, and that's CEQA. Fortunately, there are new state laws that actually help to streamline that, so there are some housing projects that can take advantage of SB 35 and other state laws to expedite that timeframe. We'll also be tracking the percentage of building permit conformance reviews that are completed within the processing time targets. And then lastly, for downtown vibrancy, we'll be looking at the percentage of residents who are actually rating their experience in downtown San Jose and rating it as attractive, and also that the downtown is economically viable. And so with that, I believe I'm turning it back over to Dolan.
Thanks, Rosalyn. So next, we're going to talk about the second deliverable, which is the focus area dashboard, which complements the focus area scorecard. So in addition to the scorecard's outcome and performance measures, the dashboard includes a more comprehensive, interactive set of performance of data with additional functionality. We recognize that there is other data that provides important context around these focus areas and their performance. So our strategy here was to decouple the scorecard, which will allow very focused quarterly deliberations coming directly to council from the dashboards, which will be available for council and the public and staff, and they'll include a much broader and deeper range of data, including, too, including what is presented in the scorecard. So for example, when I discussed the cleaning up our neighborhoods focus area, the cleanup rating being disaggregated by race and ethnicity and location would show up here. The backlog of cases, for example, subtyped by the type of case and the priority of case, would show up here as well, so that have a much more rich, interactive format. But we learned from our city initiatives roadmap reports and the eight enterprise priorities and the objectives and the key results that we needed to bring a very limited focus set of data, which is what we'll be bringing to the scorecards on a quarterly basis, and additional data needs will be shown up in the dashboards. So to conclude, we'll confirm the progress reporting, this time by audience. So for the city council, we'll be coming on a quarterly cadence with the scorecard verbal update as part of the 3.X city council agenda, and of course, we'll be bringing all four focus areas' scorecards each quarter. From an administration perspective, the monthly cabinet team meetings and weekly or daily execution team meetings will be utilizing those scorecards to have it front and center about what performance we're trying to drive, and they will be using objectives as measured by key results to help manage across and downwards the organization, but we won't be bringing all those objectives and key results to the council on a quarterly basis. And then for the public, we'll be also quarterly refreshing the dashboards on the website for all the four focus areas. So for next steps, number one, adoption of the 2324 budget, so we can begin moving forward. Second, we'll have the city manager's office begin coordinating with the departments and information technology on the heavy lift to build those focus area scorecards and dashboards. We'll bring the first quarterly update of scorecards to council mid-October 2023, since, as Omar mentioned, we do have some calendar-year goals we want to bring to council before the end of the calendar year. Four, we'll be rolling out the dashboards in subsequent updates to council at the end of the fall 2023, because there's four of them, and that's a pretty heavy lift to get all of that data out there in a usable, readable format disaggregated. And then finally, we'll be increasing the frequency and expand the scope of the outcome and performance measure data collection to resolve any reporting gaps, including but not limited to getting the community survey questions we've done on a quarterly basis instead of annual, and working with those departments to get the operational data, which sometimes they only report on a annual basis, but is available to be reported on a quarterly basis. So that concludes our presentation and the direction we were provided in the January 13th rules memo to direct us to come back with an approach of performance management framework scorecard for these focus areas, and we're available for questions.
Great. Thank you. I think this is much clearer than trying to present very granular key results for every department and program in the city. So I think it's, at least directionally, I'm sure there'll be feedback and iteration, but directionally represents real progress. Vice Mayor Kama?
Thank you. I just wanted to know, going back to the reporting, for the city council, it's going to be quarterly, as well as the public, a quarterly refresh. Does it come to council first and then get refreshed, or does it happen simultaneously?
We can certainly work on that timing. If the council would like us to come with a scorecard first before we release the dashboard, I think we can work through that. We just wanted to be responsive to all the different audiences who are eager to see that data.
Yeah, I'm okay if it happens simultaneously. I don't know how my colleagues feel, but you know, I was just curious, do we get it first, or do we get it simultaneously? That's something perhaps we can see. I like the dashboard. I like the scorecard format that you have, so I'm really looking forward to it. I also wanted to know a little bit, you mentioned the information from the roadmap, but I was wondering, because this is sort of a different system, what is going to be your baseline data?
So in much the same way, the last week, over a week, you've been looking at the CSAs and the CSA performance scorecards, performance dashboards. We'd be going back to that data and using that, so there's consistency and no confusion between the CSAs reporting and what we're reporting here. And then that's actually what we'll be doing as soon as we get approval of the budget, is to move forward and establish the goals, the baselines, and then recovering the historical data for the reporting.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilmember Davis?
Thank you. I appreciate the presentation. I was listening in the back. I just need to stay moving. The only question I have, and you all know, especially Dolan, how much I like data, but my concern with all of this work is keeping staff focused on the actual work as opposed to the dashboard and the data. So I'd like to hear more about that. Even the word "scorecard" sounds like it could be punitive, and Lee kind of touched on that issue of letting staff feel safe. How can we do that? How are you planning to do that as deputy city managers overseeing all of this? My main concern is, great, we're going to have a lot more data and a lot more frequently be looking at data, but how will you keep staff focused on the work instead of the data?
I'll start, and then ask Dolan to jump in whenever I mess up. I think, you know, on the data and the scorecard, a lot of that is going to happen with the people sitting in row one and row two with me, quite frankly, so that the teams can be more focused on actual outputs and the operations or policy changes that may or may not need to occur. So Dolan and Eric will be supporting all the deputy city managers and myself through that. I think as, you know, the safety that I talked about, you know, it's our responsibility, those of us that are in the box, and as Jennifer has directed through the one-team leadership values, that we continue to provide that to our teams, and especially as some of these people start to spend more time on some of the execution teams in their department, it's going to be up to us to have that team environment, which I will say internally we do a really good job of. I think what will be tricky for us is, while you saw some of the, you know, the names for like the clean neighborhoods, there's a lot of other boxes of other agencies that are going to be included and pretty dependent on us meeting expectations, and so two things. One, as we start to get those team members involved and cultivate those relationships, we need to make an attempt for those organizations to know, hey, we're in this together. We'll succeed or fail together, so that it's not us versus them, which sometimes it is. And then secondly, when we don't meet an expectation or an outcome or performance metric on the scorecard, we just need to be very upfront and tell you why. It could be something that we've tried operationally, where we swung and missed, or we fouled it off, and that's perfectly okay. We just need to be transparent about it. Or it could be that, you know, there was a Senate bill or an Assembly bill that passed that we didn't really understand that took us down a wrong track, and we need to be able to tell those type of stories. So I think the simplicity of the scorecard, actually, in some ways, while it is an accountability tool, we actually, as a team, think it allows us to just tell a better story for you guys about how our operations are going, but also where we need you on the public policy front to lead or change or pivot. So I think it's a better storytelling tool for us.
Thank you. Dolan, did you want to add anything?
That's a leading question. I think what I would just add is, if you remember in the Wayback Machine, when we were talking about this, I think it was at the budget study session last year with the last mayor and council, I threw up a Venn diagram, and one of those was, do we collect it today as one of the criteria by which we'd get started? So as we went through this, we were very considerate about, are we creating completely new data stores that we have to go out and acquire and buy, and the operational workload on the departments gets increased, or are we leveraging existing data today, or something we already have a through line to get? So the objectives and the performance measures were very carefully looked at, so that we knew we could get it today, or it was operational data, and that between IT and support from the city manager's office, who we've identified who the staff would be already, we can work with the operational, you know, the AOs of the departments and get that data frequency, not existence, but frequency collected more often. And I do think that might be some additional workload on the department, so we're going to have to work through that, but we've done everything we can not to create a completely new source and a completely new data store that we'd have to spend a lot of time doing. I think a lot of the collection and aggregation is actually with the IT department, as we learned when we did the homelessness dashboard that we published a couple months ago in collaboration. So that, I think, answers the second part, is we are definitely trying to minimize the workload on staff, so they can go out and do this. One example you might be surprised at is the cell phone ping data to actually determine the vibrancy of the downtown, how many people are working around there. We actually have a good through line on very accurate data now, and we're really excited about that. So that's just an example of, that may even look like it's new data. That's a heavy workload, but we've already thought through the source and know who we're going to contract it with and the viability of the data.
Great. Thank you.
Thanks, councilmember. Okay, just a time check. We're 11:50, I believe, almost. We won't try to get out of here by noon, as what we had scheduled. I have a few hands up. I don't want to cut off the conversation. I also don't want to shortchange the public at all. So how many hands do we have up currently? One? Okay. If you are listening to Zoom and would like to comment, it would be helpful if you'd put your hand up, just so we have accurate accounting. To my colleagues, would you like to run over five, 10, 15 minutes, or would you like to reconvene in the afternoon? This is our last item. I feel like we could continue through if folks are okay with that. Okay. The heads I'm seeing nod are all yes. So we will continue, and we'll go to Councilmember Jimenez.
Thank you. Just a very sort of overarching question. So the outcome measures and the performance measures, I'm still trying to digest everything that you've put in front of us. And so if we, as a council office, or, you know, as Lee said, as leaders of the community, thought that there may be a better measure or a different thing we need to look at, or maybe a different outcome, when is, what's the timing of that thought, that recommendation? Is it today, or is it just simply before the budget?
We'd love to have the feedback.
How baked is this, I guess?
Yeah. So I would say, happy to hear the feedback now. We will be producing a manager's budget addendum that tries to shore up all of this as we move forward. I also think, because this is going to be an iterative process, not just on our side, but your side... but your side, if we have something wrong that first quarter or the second quarter, we need to hear it then, and we can make changes as well. But I think all of us in this room together will be going through this in the first year. So what we think may work today may not work six months from now, and even some of those data sources, if they fall through, we may choose to measure something else as we move forward.
Right, but even when it comes, say, just thinking about the future, it comes back to us in, you know, quarterly sort of updates, if you will. Let's just assume the first time it comes back to us, I'm just making this up, right? But I say, hey, I personally don't think this is the best performance measure, best outcome measure, this is what I recommend, and it's just simply a vote of the council to direct you to, I mean, there's going to be a discussion and everything built into that. Would you expect that anyone that has other ideas comes to you all before, has that discussion, we vet it, and then it pops through the hopper?
Yeah, so I guess ideally, I'll take this question. Ideally, we'd like to hear that feedback as part of this budget process, so we can kick the teams off in the right way, at least what we think is the right way, beginning in July. So again, we're going to put out a manager's budget addendum, and you're welcome to put out BDs too related to this, and you'll be voting on this as part of the June budget message, but there's certainly time, and we can even take comments offline too before we put out an MBA, which we'll probably put out, when do you think, Jim, on this one? Another week or so?
Probably next week.
Yeah, so if you have any thoughts in between there, we can think about it, so, or if you have some today, we'd more than happy to think about it. But to staff's point, and what Lee was saying, is that even if we do start out with this what we think ideal, we are, it's going to be that iterate-to-improve concept as we go forward. So we're going to be very flexible with this, we just got to obviously make sure that we can get the data to actually measure, and that it makes sense to staff.
Okay, all right.
Okay, councilmember Jimenez, just a yes and, so you understand what you're reading, because this didn't come with a 50-page report. So on the scorecard, where it says validation, that is where we actually took the council discussion to incorporate, right? So if it was, if it says CSA, it means it's on the CSA dashboard, and in looking at the March message for the focus area and looking at what was in the CSA dashboard, our best professional judgment was that was what made sense to collect. And then when it says Transition Task Force, which should have said mayoral transition committee, that particular measure was mentioned there. So just to give you some kind of context of how we identified those, and then also, I think, the concept with the dashboard versus the scorecard, there's nothing, there's a lot more data we're going to be tracking in the dashboard, right? So the scorecard is the most important things in our professional recommendation, and the feedback we've gotten from council so far of what to bring forward as the first iteration. Those dashboards are going to have a lot more data, and so we can also have that discussion. If you see something that's in, like, the dashboard that you think is something to deliberate in council, we can certainly consider, you know, bringing that forward as well. What we were concerned about is, Councilmember Davis will appreciate the word, there's a concept in data called Cartesian explosions. When a multiplier times a multiplier times a multiplier gets you a 54-page report. And so we were cognizant of there's four of these, and so every time we add an additional performance measure or an additional outcome, then we're multiplying, you know, we're potentially multiplying them out. So that's where we're trying to balance what's in the scorecard, and why did we put it there as a first iteration, and what can also go in the dashboard, and certainly we can take a lot of feedback and figure out the right location to report what you're interested in addition to this.
Okay, thank you. And, you know, what came to mind is, for example, I was looking, as it relates to my question, right, just thinking about the outcome measure, for example, for the city safety perception, the outcome measure is percentage of residents rating city as very safe or somewhat safe. Obviously, that's very important, perception is important, but we're saying is, we're going to, we're going to try to draw that down and change that perception, is my understanding of this is by showing a change in incidence of property crime types, so I assume that's a downward, right? Change in incidence of violent crimes and injury crash rates, that's fine, you know, I would like to think that a change in those, a reduction in those, would bring an increase of residents that say we have a very safe or somewhat safe city, but I also know that the perception of crime and safety is fed into the public in many different ways, someone for, sometimes from politicians, sometimes for the television, what we read from next door, and so how do we navigate that? Because I can imagine that's something that can occur, and I'm just curious as to how you would, how you see something like that happening.
Sure, and I'll ask Dolan to jump in after I answer again. You know, the transition committee, we actually spent quite a bit of time, as the Vice Mayor will remember, on this very question. I think the survey data is actually pretty readily available, which is super helpful, but I also think, operationally, we do want to know, is perception matching what the performance says? Because based off of, you know, current survey methodology, where, you know, it doesn't align with what PIS-FIS hears every other month in the way of some of our crime reporting, and quite frankly, how we report crime and what those crimes are changes rapidly as well, which we need to better understand. So I actually liked, and I know a lot of the transition committee spoke about this, that those two things don't necessarily perfectly align, and it allows for a more robust conversation if we do want to change those, you know, performance metrics. I know a lot of folks have had ideas around just the call time around calling 911 as well, and so I think for us, we wanted to start with that, to really see if the perception really does match what we're seeing out on the street.
I'd also just, sorry to interrupt, but I'd also just add, I think it's a great point, it's a learning we need to have and be able to reflect on, and there have been moments where we've even, based on those kinds of understandings, decided to invest more in public outreach, public education, whether it's been, just now, we're doing a slowdown San Jose campaign that is literally just focused on getting a message delivered to the community, we've invested in the promotoria model, not that we're going to just suddenly put tons of money into communications, but it is an important part of our job, and actually we may find, hey, we sped up 911 responses and did some other things that were great, things are trending really well, we need to do a better job of making sure our residents are aware of this. So I think it could shift over time, a variety of tactics that we use, just as an example.
Okay, thank you. And then the, I appreciated you sharing, Lee, your initial comments about providing safety for staff, city bureaucracy, as you put it, to fail quickly, the learnings and all that. I think it's important to have that up here as well for the elected officials, right? And I guess what I'm not interested in seeing is, say, for example, because the data is just information in my mind. The knowledge comes from what we each derive from that data, we can agree, we can disagree, we can view the data in different ways, and I suspect that's what probably will happen up here, we may see different things based on looking at the same information. And so I just think it's important to acknowledge that, that I appreciate you saying that with staff, but acknowledging that up here, that I don't want to get to a place where we, as a city, say, okay, out of this hopper, out of this measure, you know, this data, this information, we're seeing this, so we hence have to do this. We get X, we have to do Y, right? In that case, we just have a bunch of robots up here just voting based on algorithms on what we see out in the community. And so I think just the decisions that we make up here are much more nuanced, much more information that are informed of what we see live in our respective districts, what our experience is living in this city, and so I think it's just important to just say out loud that that, I hope and expect that that's going to be part of the process as well, and not sort of corner folks into saying that you should vote this way because this is what the data, which is purely information, tells us, when it is truly much more nuanced than that. And so that wasn't a question, but you can...
I'm happy to jump in. I mean, that's how we are taking it very much, so the use of data or a scorecard isn't to produce an equation that tells you whether it's true or false. Like I said before, a lot of these issues are not true and false, they're value-based decisions that you guys need to make, and so we, on the staff side, are going to do our best to tee up those conversations. That data also, by the way, some of it will be our own qualitative analysis that we need to bring forward as well, that's super important. And so from our perspective, we'll do our best to tee up those conversations for you guys, and I would just say, I think there's a lot more power in just how you guys have those conversations versus what you decide to do. So hear you loud and clear.
Thank you.
Thanks, councilmember. Dolan, did you want to add?
Yeah, just a yes and, if you go back and look at the design of the scorecard, kind of, there's the upper half, which is the numbers, right? And I definitely don't want anyone to become a robot just over numbers. Then we added the lower half, which is programs, funding, key issues, dependencies, milestones that we'll discuss with you, and that's where we will put in that qualitative discussion and have those discussions as well. So again, looking at balancing the data, so to speak, the data and stories and the information we bring to you, there's kind of that upper half and the lower half, which is exactly why we did that, so you could, we could trigger that conversation with you, especially on the key dependencies, issues, and risks.
Yeah, and I appreciate the comment from Councilmember Jimenez. I mean, like, I think, you know, as elected officials, we synthesize many more data points, perspectives, experiences, much of it intuitive and qualitative, based on the experience of going out and knocking on thousands of doors, for example, and I think that's important to note, and I think that we have to have a set of values and vision, and then the data can help us refine and look at, okay, this program isn't doing what we expected, what does that mean? So let's step back and decide, do we double down on it, or do we decide maybe to pursue a different program because we just spent a bunch of time and money and we didn't get the outcome that we expected? But it's only one input, but I am quite confident that just as speed safety cameras will not eliminate the need for police officers, I don't think that these kinds of dashboards are going to eliminate the need for elected representatives to use their judgment ultimately, to decide where we go on the big questions. Let's keep going here, on to Councilmember Batra.
Thank you very much for producing this governance, looks like it's very well thought out. The structure is definitely suitable for what we are trying to focus on. My question is, in everything we normally do, we have the commissions and the public involved in somewhere along the line as an oversight or as an input and all that, and in this portion, if I've seen any, anything, if I'm reading it correctly, the only role of the public is to see the dashboard. Am I reading it correctly, or there's more active role than that?
No, that is correct, councilmember. We view you as the city council, as the commissioner council that has a say in how we operationalize and resource these four areas.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you, councilmember. Councilmember Cohen?
Yeah, thank you. I appreciate the thought put into this, for me, this raises more questions than it answers, so I'm going to try to synthesize some of those thoughts, but I very much appreciate the questions from councilmembers Davis and Jimenez, because I had some of the similar thoughts, and my first thought along the lines of what Councilmember Davis asked was, you know, in this time of tight budget, as I see an item which talks about building dashboards, I kind of wonder, are we, what are we, are we utilizing our resources correctly? And I want to make sure we're not going to be putting so much effort into that and not into the actual priorities that we've been focused on for a while. So I think that's been asked, I don't want to ask that again, but it's kind of a concern of mine. On the data question about, for example, Councilmember Jimenez asked about safety, and perception is important, we obviously, as councilmembers and as a city, need to respond to perception, but we also need to work in fact. And if our measure is percent change, but we're already at a baseline that's maybe better than people think it is, I want to be careful about, you know, saying it has to decrease if in some areas we're already, people's perception is not reality. So I want to think about how we measure this in a way that's not just, we have a baseline from today and it has to go down in all these areas, or else we're failing. How do we message it? How do we measure our baseline? What are the right measures? Those are all, to me, those are all important. Again, I don't know that there's a question in there, but I do want to suggest in the, I think I heard some, I heard you say, I think, Lee, I think police response time is a measure that we're all concerned about, and I think having priority one call response time, or even priority one and two call response time as measures for improvement, I think, would be beneficial, given that we focused on that, and we've talked about that, and we know we have room to improve there, so I would like to see response time as a metric in that chart. On the homelessness focus area, I see a whole lot of specific goals about building 1,000 units, about keeping people housed. First question I have, well, I guess, again, suggestion I have, talked about building units, but I know Councilmember Foley and I, for a couple years, have been focused on safe parking for RVs in the city, and we have a plan, I think, to do some of that going forward. I don't see it in here at all reflected. To me, that's an important thing that many of people in different parts of the city are asking for, that we've been asking for, and it's not even mentioned in this metric, in this category, so I'm going to request that it be added into that category in some way, that that as well, finding places for people to park safely and...
And just to be clear, that's the first one, when it says new placements, we need to better...
Yeah, so I want to make sure it's clear.
I think it needs to be clear.
I want to make sure it's clear, because we've talked about 1,000 EIHs, and we've talked about safe parking, those are two separate things, and if 1,000 placements now combine safe parking and EIHs, we should be explicit about that, because that's not explicitly what this council has said before, and I want to be sure what are the metrics that we're looking at. The difficult philosophical question that we've been dealing with and that all of us are being crushed with in this past couple weeks and for the next month, is this debate about Measure E funding versus what we do to address this category? I think we're all in this difficult position where we're torn, we've approved over the years these goals of building EIH, we know its importance of getting safe parking, we know it's important. We also all, I think, believe universally in the value of affordable housing, there's many, there's multiple sources for funding for affordable housing, and I want to fully understand that better as we move into the next few weeks, and we'll have, I know I'd have meetings scheduled for that. But given, I think the public argument now is, the second and third buckets here talk about, once people are in these temporary shelters, they got to move into permanent housing. The statement that's being made is, you're never going to be successful with Boxes Two and Three if you put the money into Box One and you don't save enough money for affordable housing. I'm not convinced that the argument is that black and white, I think it's much more nuanced than that. I think it's, it can't be either or, it has to be both. I think we may have to make some adjustments this year in order to do some of our goals, but we're going to have to figure out how to message that. We're going to have to make sure that it's clear, what, you know, we can't just say we have to, everybody has to move into housing unless we are clear that we know what that looks like, what that housing is, where that housing's coming from, and where we're going to get more of it, because we can't just dismiss the need for more affordable housing to get more people into permanent, secure housing while we address what's on this particular category. So again, another, just another point there. On the cleaning our neighborhoods box, I'm curious about exactly where on this list here we think we're moving the needle. I mean, I think, sure, people want cleaner neighborhoods, there's a mix of a variety of things that are causing issues, and it's related to economic development, it's related to homelessness, it's related to a lot of things. I think that actually one of our most successful programs in the city now is the response to graffiti removal, is Beautify SJ's reaction within 48 hours of cleaning up dumping when it's reported. So this first box says, let's improve that, and I'm just curious, prove it from what? I mean, we already have what I think is the highest rated program, and if the goal here is to improve that response, is that really something we're moving the needle on? Is that really something that is what we need to focus on right now? I think we need to, you know, think about that a little bit more. I've said a lot of things without asking any questions, I'm not sure if there's questions in any of this, but this is my reaction to a lot of the stuff on this. I'm not sure yet that this gets us where we have to go, and I do appreciate, Lee, what you said about failing, failing forward, moving fast, those kind of things. We do have to have room for that, and back to Councilmember Davis's questions about people being safe, and we have to make sure, obviously, that if we're saying it, that moving fast is important, that we're prepared, that we're not always going to be successful. And we can't continue, I believe, to sort of buy into public messaging that's always negative, and then blame the city when the negative things don't always get better as quickly as we want them to. That, to me, has been a big frustration of the last few years. I, as an elected official, have to go and answer for the things that happen in my district, I'm happy to do that, but it only, it only works if we're unified as a council and as a city in that messaging. If the messaging is, look, we have a, we have a scorecard and we haven't achieved it, and it's because something's failing somewhere in the system, as opposed to, hey, we tried several things and it's not working, but we're going to continue to try, then I don't think we're going to make, to get the public response that we want to get. And that worries me as we move into the next year, because I think a lot of these measure areas have become so political with people hearing, like, as was mentioned, they're hearing, as Mr. Jimenez said, from a variety of sources that things are messed up, and that nobody's trying, and that nothing's working, and they've gotten used to years of deflecting, it's, this is somebody else's property and not city's property, and therefore, we can't do anything about it. I don't like that argument, I don't ever tell people that, but we need to... But we need to, I think, be aligned in, at least appreciating whatever progress we make, and appreciating whatever efforts are being done as we fail fast moving forward, because not everything's going to work as quickly as we want it to work. So that's what concerns me about this entire discussion in this, in this part of the budget meetings, and I just wanted to kind of express that. We often, and one last thing I want to say is, we do need to move some of our own internal impediments from getting to these endpoints. In conversations I have with staff a lot, I always feel like there are various departments, sometimes at odds with each other. There are various goals that not everyone thinks we can achieve. I often feel like sometimes that the people are looking for reasons why we can't make something work. And I hope that we will all try to kind of move out, everybody will move outside of our way of normal thinking, and say, we have to try something different, we have to get out of the way, we have to move faster. If an EIH project takes three years, because every time we get to a point, somebody says, oh, but we didn't check this one last box, or we didn't do this one last thing, we're not making any progress in the meantime. So I hope that we will be thoughtful about how we encourage everybody to align towards the goals that we're trying to achieve. And I guess that's the end of my lecture. Thank you.
Thank you. It was enlightening, and I think you make a lot of fair points, and this is definitely going to be a very iterative process, I hope, and I certainly would like to see greater clarification of the thinking behind some of the proposed metrics. Thank you to staff for the presentation, all the thought that's gone into this system. We're going to move on to public comment.
Paul?
Paul Soto, followed by Dawn.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. I've only got 1 minute 46 seconds. I'd like that timer checked. It started just running. So I would like that timer checked, because you started running it when I wasn't able to access.
Paul, you're using your time. Let's go.
No, I ain't going nowhere, mayor. I'm staying right here. I can stay for as long as I.
Dawn?
Good afternoon, Honorable Mayor and councilmembers. This comment is related to the fee discussion. My name is Marley Young, and I represent the San Jose Public Library Foundation. I'm speaking to you today to respectfully request that you consider eliminating the late fees for all San Jose Public Library cardholders. Late fees and the fear of accruing them pose a significant barrier to our most vulnerable adults and inhibit their use of library resources. Libraries across the country have begun the process of going fine-free, including our neighbors in San Francisco, San Mateo, and Alameda Counties. This is in recognition that overdue fines create barriers to access for the very populations the library works to serve, and are not an effective tool to encourage on-time return rates. There are numerous ways to ensure materials are returned, such as more frequent reminders and communication, as well as keeping those fees for items that are truly lost or damaged. The San Jose Public Library was among the first in the nation to remove late fees for children. Now it is time for us to catch up with our neighbors and all those fine-free libraries. Fines Free for All will support the recovery of our highest-need communities and make the library a welcoming space for everyone. Thank you for your time.
Back to the council.
That concludes our budget session for today. Since we held it off a little bit this morning, the afternoon session is canceled. We don't need that. Also, Wednesday, we had held the morning for, just in case we needed it. It is not needed, and will also be canceled. And with that, we're adjourned.